Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of September 19th, 2017. First item is a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor? A motion to approve the minutes of September 5th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th?
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Department head, committee chair updates? None? Okay.
Nope. I have the three that asked if it was on the agenda by your deadline.
Oh, sorry, Road Committee. Sorry, Road Committee. I was writing down the September 5th.
Cindy Hart, Road Committee. Last week, we had a meeting. We talked about camp roads and the fact that there is an opportunity perhaps to get some money from grants and various other sources and perhaps the town can even chip in now with new laws. And so, we asked and are asking to put an ad in the paper. It's sort of a done deal because we put it in so that we could have it for two weeks on Saturday. I've paid for it. I'm happy to pay for it because I think it's that important, but if you want to reimburse me, that would be wonderful, too. The other thing that we discussed, and this is from going back to 2013 of the turnarounds, and this is just to cover us legally when we turn around. And I have all the drawings and notes here for it, and I'd like to pass those on to you, Jennifer, and perhaps you can make a copy of everything and get one back so the Road Committee has it, too. But this has been mapped out and everything is in here as to what the duties are to proceed to finish it. I don't know. The question, one question will be on Buzzell Road. The Road Committee had talked about instead of going down the 500 feet that we do onto Buzzell, that we would not do that because there are no driveways on it at all, and then we have to continue onto a private road and turn around into a driveway. So, that didn't make sense to the committee. We recommended that we just stop at Langley Shore Drive and not go in that last bit, and it would make it easier for the town. Willow Street is a driveway turnaround. Pack Road is a turnaround, a driveway turnaround, and the easements are here. So, I want to leave those with you, and I'm hoping that you will approve our ad.
What does the ad say?
I have it right here.
I haven't seen it.
Shall I read it to you?
Yes, it's good to read it again.
Okay. Acton Camp Roads. The Acton Camp Road Committee, the Acton Road Committee would like to hear from road committees and residents of private roads. Please share your concerns and successes about road management and maintenance. We're hoping to provide more help in the future and would appreciate your input. This is going to tell us what's going on, who's running the road possibly, what we can help, what we can do to help and gain some consistency in the way that we approach the gravel roads out there. So, that's it for me unless you've got any questions.
Last I knew, you couldn't use town funds on a private road. What's changed?
The laws have been amended since it initially went through because when the laws were first went through, it was not really intended for camp roads. It was started because of the problems up north with the loggers using roads and towns putting money in and then them getting obliterated by logging companies and then closed and closed off. So, that's what started it. And then, as it's evolved, it's still a new law and changes are being made in every legislative session because we realized the need for protecting our lakes. This is our 75 to 80 percent of our cash flow, and we're asking people that really don't know how to maintain a road to try to do it, and we're shooting ourselves in the foot by doing this. We need expert advice. When we get grants, they, we have to get an engineer to go down and approve it, and then everything is inspected afterwards. There's a lot to it to do it properly, and that's what we need to do. That's how we can help our own town. That's why your taxes are low inland because the lake people, we have people on our road paying $11,000 in taxes a year. They have no children in school. I mean, it's a lot of money, and the best, the most we can do to help them maintain these roads, the better off as a town we are.
I agree, and thank you for putting your work into that. And if you can find any, as the laws change, you know, let it kind of fill us in what those are, and thank you for keeping up with that.
Sure. I'd be glad to. I'll come in anytime you want with whatever is current, and I have to look into it because we haven't done it for a while.
Especially if you can help them get grants to do it.
Oh, yeah. This helps tremendously if we can get the federal grants. And with the infrastructure bills that I hope are coming up federally next year, this is where we should be tapping into money for our bridges. A few years ago, there were grants available called Tiger Grants that we could have tapped into. I'm assuming that if we get a big federal program on infrastructure, something like that will come up again, and this involves getting money for interstate commerce. And where we're, both of ours, I think, could qualify under that, and we'd be a low-cost bridge compared to something like the Sarah Long Bridge that they're doing in Portsmouth. So, I just think that we've got to keep an eye on it and get as much free money as we possibly can in here.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Is there any direction from the board in regards to the ad and the turnaround? What is it you want me to do with this information?
I think we need to have somebody look at the easement to make sure that...
This is easements, right, on every single turnaround? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, there's a form.
It's a winter. It's strictly for plowing in winter.
This is the form you emailed me with the ad?
Yeah. That's it. And there was a second part to it that I think I gave you today that would be in your office, and I believe you notarized that.
Yeah.
It'd be good to have Brad take a look at both of them and finish it up.
That's the form that the property owner's going to sign authorizing the town turnaround.
Yeah, the Road Commissioner is going to go down, define exactly what he's doing. He's the first step. It's all outlined in this file, and I'll give it to you, and you can get it back to me when you can.
So, do you want me to meet with both the Road Commissioners and let them look at it first, and then, with their blessing, move forward and have the easement document looked at?
Yep.
And what about the ad? I mean, you have a, I'll take the folder.
I'm just, I thought the Road Committee had a budget line, but apparently, like, the Rec Committee, the Planning Board Committee...
Yeah, they don't have a, they don't have one.
No. I'm happy to donate this. I think it's important enough.
Your publishing line, that's your choice.
Oh. How's our publishing? It just seems, it seems like the Road Committee should have...
So, do you want to cover the expenses? Is there a second to that?
When warrant and finance committee starts meeting, I think we would like to ask for one for next year, a budget. So, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess there wasn't a second.
There was.
Three River...
Just before something's done, I think we need to be made aware of it and say, yes, we'll...
Yeah, and she knew that going into it. Because I emailed you guys the ad. She knew, yeah, she knew going into it that there was a chance, and the only reason she went ahead and authorized it was because she wasn't going to make a two-week notice.
Mm-hmm.
So, she knew she was coming for a 50-50 chance of reimbursement.
Three Rivers Land Trust.
So, Mr. Davis called me at the last minute, and I wasn't able to come tonight. I'm going to try to speak on their behalf. So, last week, you guys read aloud the letter from Romac, from Burke &amp; Clegg regarding Romac and allowing us to take the gift of $10,000 for the parking lot. They were fine with it. They wanted one word change that I cleared with the attorney. It said, "If grant funds designated for this purpose are received, they certainly can be reimbursed to Three Rivers." They've asked that it's changed to, "If grant funds designated for this purpose are received, they certainly will be reimbursed."
Okay.
Which I didn't think that was a concern. So, that change was made. They made the $10,000 deposit today. Two people have signed it, so this is the same letter. So, I just need the board to make a motion to sign that. That's what you agreed to last week.
Did you want to make a motion?
All right. I guess I'm going to make a motion to sign this. Sorry. Agreement with, in reference to Romac Hill, that we accept, just trying to see where I should read.
The $10,000?
The $10,000 that we would use towards the drive, parking lot driveway.
Basically, it's just in stone for both parties. That is, assuming the grant money comes in like it's supposed to.
Okay.
We will reimburse Three Rivers.
So, we will reimburse them as soon as it comes in.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I don't understand. I haven't know how to start it.
Tax collector.
Can I throw that on there? So, tax bills are out. If you haven't gotten yours by now, you need to call me. So, you should definitely have had it by now. Just really encourage you to read the fine print in the middle. We get a lot of phone calls. We do take a lot of time to put those bills together. Essentially, if you have a mortgage, just a happy reminder that you're supposed to forward the bill to them. We're required by law to send it to the property owner, and we're also required to send it to the owner as of April 1st. So, if you sold your property after April 1st, there is a reason you still got the bill, and if you read the fine print in the middle, it tells you specifically what to do with it. So, tax bills are out. They are on the website. It's a large PDF, but if you haven't gotten them by now, we've already gotten probably 100 back with bad addresses. Give me a call in my office, and we'll see what's going on.
Okay. Old business, maintenance zoning.
So, this kind of ties, I think we can talk about special town meeting, kind of do A and C together. I know that you said last week that you wanted to wait until after the marijuana public hearing to decide where we're going. Ed can attest to a meeting that we had with a property owner again today and a list that Mr. Paul gave me that we really need to do something and move on this. I mean, I understand the marijuana thing. I'm hoping that we can talk about a special town meeting, picking a date, and I know that there was some talk about if we do something with marijuana, it may be on a secret ballot, so these may be unrelated to one another because a special town meeting we could have essentially in seven to 14 days if we post accordingly, whereas if we're looking to vote on marijuana, I think that there was talk about doing that in November with the ballot. So, they'd be separate. He has, he's given me a list of pending applications based on how many he has out that are still waiting, people that are waiting. I think the oldest date I found on here was 8/17. They're still waiting for their original permits to be issued. So, the yellow are the people that are very upset that they haven't gotten their permits or their inspections, the projects, the list of violations that he's currently working on, and a lot of new violations that have come in. So, we really need to think about moving forward with that, get that department some help.
Basically, he needs more help.
He needs, yeah, we need more manpower. Either increase his hours or the board, is it your thought that you're going to bring in a deputy and kind of let the department head determine where the best use for that is, or are you looking to give some direction as far as just letting that person take over with violations and penalties until we get that caught up, or what are you thinking?
I would think it would be up to the department head. I mean, any more than we don't tell you what you're going to do with your next employee, you know, or your employees.
Yeah. That's fair. I just wanted to know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think between 15 and 20 hours a week, we can't cross the 21 hours.
Right.
Because if you become a full-time employee. So, I think somewhere between 15 and 20, and...
So, can we think about...
Do we have anything else to put on the town meeting?
I mean, nothing that can't wait. I mean, the, you know, a lot of the other ordinances that you guys have talked about changing, you know, in my opinion anyways, can wait until the annual, and it's always best to do whatever we can at the annual town meeting. Nothing of substance, but again, I mean, unless you want to rearrange his pile and I'm not sure what else to do, I don't think it's getting any better.
No. I mean, he's working on it.
Oh, he's working extremely hard. Yeah, we want to put it out.
Yeah, the workload is not getting any better. It's actually gotten worse with this new, you know, adding this to it. But it's all things that had to be done.
Right.
You know, it's all workload that needed, desperately needed attention.
Be addressed, right.
Yeah. So, I would say, I think we're about ready for a special town meeting to try to hire some help.
And as far as you can, I think that's the only item that really needs to be addressed?
I can't come up with anything else. It's like I say, we're, you know, we're still talking about the marijuana thing, and I think that...
Which would be secret ballot anyways.
That's what you guys talked about, right?
I think so, and I think if we could do that in November, you know, that'd be the way to go with that one, so.
All right, so I'll double-check the law as far as posting requirements. So, if we can, if we can draft up a warrant and even have it ready as soon as next week because essentially, all you have to do is sign the warrant calling for the special town meeting. You said you wanted to budget it on up to 20 hours, right? We're going to take the amount of, amount of weeks we have left in the fiscal year multiplied times. We said up to $20 an hour, include FICA, Medicaid. That'll be our number. Anything else you, we want to put in there? I should have covered it, right?
No. I know we talked about it back in the spring when we were putting budgets together.
Oh, we've, we have been talking about it.
But we just, you know, decided not to do it based on dollars and cents.
Right.
But I think it's proven itself now that the workload is such that it's needed. So, I think we've, you know, I think we've been fairly responsible as far as trying to, trying to work it out.
Road Committee Survey.
So, I did hear back from both of the Road Commissioners. Mr. Winchell gave, essentially gave it back and marked the ones that he did not want to see moved forward and the ones that he was okay with. Mr. Mooney, same thing, gave me some additional things. Some of their ideas of where the Road Committee should be at is crafting and submitting grant applications to offset taxes, which was on there, advising town meeting, advising the Road Committee, execute other duties as requested by the Road Commissioners, helping create ordinances. They've got, Scott mentioned today that he would like the Road Committee to help him with particular situations, you know, that come up that, let's just say, the example he used, did you see the email that I sent you this week about the individual on...
Eacock.
No, no. It was Beechwood and Lakewood.
Yeah, yeah.
Scott was his first name. Did you see that? He, he had a variety of documents that he believes that this certain portion of road is town road. He thinks it's always been a town road. He initially called last Thursday night, and the property owner and Mr. Mooney and I had a conference call, and we kind of went back and forth, and he sent over all of the data that he believes makes it a town road. So, in talking to Scott Mooney today, he said, he used that as an example, thought it was a perfect thing for the Road Committee to be able to look into and dig into to help determine if it was because Scott said that he couldn't, he couldn't say. I mean, he said as far as he's ever known, it's been a private road, but now that somebody's questioning it and has some documentation behind it, he's asking them to get looked into. So, that's something he mentioned. And then, this came from one of the Road Commissioners, not both, but the talk about road budgets and maybe assisting in that down the road. So, I know that the Road Committee was going to look at the survey. They, they have another meeting coming up, so I know that they probably didn't have a chance then, so they're going to look at it at the next meeting.
You're going to look at it a week from Wednesday, a week from tomorrow? Yeah.
Sure, we can take, well, we're, the next meeting is basically to listen, but we'll schedule one right after that.
Could you do it through email?
We can take, we can take a look at it. Maybe we'll be a few minutes early. We'll take a look at it for the government.
Okay.
So, the survey's on hold until we get something back from the Road Committee?
Yes. And the special town meeting we talked about, auditor meeting, warrant and finance emails.
I know that I send you a lot of emails, and I know that this conversation is having a lot of emails. I just want to make sure that certain parts of this have been pointed out to you and give you a chance to, to make a call. So, two of the warrant and finance committee members clearly feel like, and I quote, "I think this meeting is premature, but it's not my call." That comes from one of them. Follow-up from the chair of the committee. I would agree with you because I would like to see more of your presentation in more distinct format. I'm concerned that we're going to bring this auditor in, and it's, I mean, if they feel like it's a premature meeting, I guess I'm wondering what the board wants to do because, I mean, originally, the members, one of the members of the warrant and finance, yeah, the warrant and finance had these questions. He presented them. He's been presenting them over the last couple of years. He presents them at town meeting. We're trying to get answers for him. The treasurer's been working with him. We set this meeting as kind of to be proactive, to get the questions answered, but now it sounds like he hasn't had a chance to get his entire presentation together. The warrant and finance hasn't had a chance to see the full presentation. I know that there were emails that went around that basically said, you know, if you have any specific questions for the auditor, get them to Jennifer by the 19th. I didn't get any, other than the assessing one that I forwarded you guys, but I think I answered that. Warrant and finance doesn't really have a lot to do with the assessment, so I'm not sure what you want to do.
I mean, if they feel as though that it's premature, why don't we throw it back in their court and say, let us know when you're ready? I mean, I hate to stretch our auditor route that way, but I don't want to bring them in at the expense of bringing them in and go through it and...
I mean, I know that warrant and finance is meeting the 25th, the day before the auditors, or the 26th, excuse me, whatever that Monday is, warrant and finance is meeting. Maybe they will have had a chance to put things together. I don't know, but it's, I can't, you know what I mean? The emails come across saying things like that, and I only read you one line of them. You've seen them all. I don't, I just want to make sure that you know that they believe it's too soon for the meeting because they haven't had a chance to gather the information, and I just don't want this meeting with the auditor to happen and them say that...
They don't have, yeah.
You know, if they're not ready, they need more time, they want to bring them back. I mean, there's no harm in passing it off, I mean, in putting it off. That's your call.
Yeah. I mean, I feel they've had plenty of time, but, you know, they've had, what, a month and a half, two months, a couple of months to put it together. But if they feel as though they need more time, I'm not opposed to, you know, I'd like to get this done in one failed swoop and get it done right, so.
I agree. I mean, I thought we were just getting together to say whether or not they were legal or not, but it sounds like they're digging for more that...
Right. The email, the email's been around the reserve accounts, and you saw the, your treasurer sent back a two, three-page email. She pulled every single reserve account from town meeting and told you when it was adopted, how it was adopted, and presented all that, but they've come, there's additional questions, so.
Yeah.
I just, it's up to you. I just don't want to, you know, I mean, we're bringing him in and...
I don't want to waste our auditor's time.
Plus, we want to make sure they have the chance to ask the questions.
Right.
You know, if they feel rushed, we certainly don't want that.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I'd say postpone it.
So, I'm going to reach out to the chair of the warrant and finance and tell him to let us know when he's ready, and at that point, we'll reschedule.
Yeah, we'll just leave it at that.
Award Goat Hill Parking Lot Bid.
So, last week, I told you guys that the feds were stepping in and trumping us, and they wanted to see the RFP, and they wanted to see all the bids and insurance and workers' comp for, for everybody that bid on the project. Elise and I and Kim and Carl Davis met with the low bidder, Randy Baldwin, on Monday. We went through the bid, step by step, penny for penny, how he came to that amount, what he plans on doing. We've checked references. We've got references from some pretty well-established companies that have used this gentleman. He just recently did the Sanford Trails as well for Lee Burnett down there. So, they speak highly of them. The price is within the budget, unless you can come up with a, if you've got more questions or some thoughts.
Did you have any questions?
I don't know. I mean, if, yeah, no, I think, no, I think if they're ready to do it, go and do it.
I think, didn't, he said on Monday, he'd still be able to pretty much meet that September 1st deadline, right? We agreed to call him tonight, and if he's awarded the bid, he says.
Start tomorrow.
Start tomorrow.
October 1st bid, you mean?
Start to have it finished or have it finished before.
Oh, sorry, start. Start, it finished by October 1st, as we said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion, is it what, Skidstea Services? Is that the name?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion, we award the bid to Skidstea Services LLC.
I'll second...
$8,750.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I was going to say, well, remember, there was the statement on Monday that the culvert was going to be, what, $50 or $100 more because the size in there was a little off?
So, it actually, he, his quote price was 8,750, but the money loaned from Three Rivers Land Trust is up to 10,000, giving room in case they needed a little bit more material.
A little more gravel.
Because it said 200 yards, and they're hoping that was going to cover it depending on the type of material that came in. I think they went and looked at it, but I don't know what the answer was, and the culvert was a little bit bigger, so it's going to be like $150 more.
And even if they go up to 10,000, which you and Three Rivers will authorize before we let them do that, it's still $6,000 less than the second bid.
That was my next question. I'll amend my motion to...
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed $10,000.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Is there anything to sign on here anywhere?
You can just initial the top for me, please.
New Business. We have a resignation. This is dated August 16th, 2017, to the Board of Selectmen. I am writing to inform you, my resignation from the Acton Recreation Committee and the position of Rec Director. Although I have enjoyed serving the community of Acton through the Rec Committee, I am beginning a new position this fall and need to devote my energies elsewhere. I will continue as Rec Director through the end of October overseeing soccer and karate. The new Rec Director will need to take responsibility beginning with the basketball season. Respectfully, Mr. Lowry Robertson.
With the motion, we accept his resignation with regret.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you, Lowry, for all you've done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're bringing some new events to the Rec Committee. Commercial Holler Permit.
So, we have one commercial holler in town. It's Travis Penny. You have a solid waste ordinance that was adopted by the voters of Acton a few years back that requires a yearly application. It requires his insurance, requires some fees, a list of his customers. It has taken a little longer than it should to put this together and get it on tonight's agenda, and we have made clear with the commercial holler that next year, he needs to be more proactive in getting it to us before the end of the fiscal year if he wants to continue to haul. But everything's there and everything's in order. This is a renewal. It's not a first. He's been doing it for several years now.
I'll make a motion that we grant the commercial holler permit for Travis Penny.
And I'll second that.
Unused pesticides.
You never know what you're going to see on the agenda.
I know. I'm like, what am I reading?
I was trying to find a way to remember to, so I skimmed it. It came in through the state of Maine, but I felt like there might be some stuff on there that some of the residents might be able to dispose of, so I didn't know if you wanted to read that or...
Are we having a toxic waste day, hazardous waste day?
It was approved by the town, and last I spoke to Bob Manwe, where he hasn't given me a date. This is something a little different. It's just, it's a, it's a day that people can bring a list of pesticides to a particular location.
Do you want to read it?
Which one should I read?
The flyer, well, information from the flyer.
Let's see here. So, we got an annual obsolete pesticide day. Let's see here. Do you see it?
September, oh, register.
We have to register by September 30th. The sites are in Prescott Isles, Bangor, Augusta, and Portland.
Okay, so this one says you have to preregister by September 29th, so...
10 days.
So, I guess you can get an inventory form online at ThinkFirstSprayLast.org if it's something you're interested in, and then it's going to be completed, I guess, by the 29th, and I guess it's unwanted pesticides. Let's see if there's anything else here. I guess it's just pesticides.
There's four locations, does that say?
Yeah, I just read it. Prescott Isles, Bangor, Augusta, or Portland, you'd have to bring them to, and I guess you can't drop in. You do have to register for this.
So, they need to know what's coming, I guess, but it sounds like you can go anytime. So they need to know what's coming, I guess. But it sounds like you can go anytime. Sounds like it's about $2 a pound.
Seems like a lot of work to pre-register to get rid of a pesticide. I mean, some of the small things that are on there.
Is that something that they would take at the dump on the day they do their?
Hazardous waste, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll check with Bob.
If you can't wait, you can register and go to Portland. Find it online. If you can wait, we will have a hazardous waste day here in Acton at some point. I thought he said this fall.
Yeah, I was thinking it was gonna be in the spring. Well, I could be wrong. I'll check with them tomorrow.
But do not throw them in household trash in the meantime. It's not where they belong.
Can I add one item? I forgot.
Sure.
So the animal control officer spoke to me today about, wondering if the board wanted to talk about, think about increasing impound fees for animals, for dogs, cats.
What is the fee now?
$50. So, with your permission, I mean, we can call around to surrounding towns, check when the last time it was changed, see what other towns do. He didn't feel like it was a, you know, we've taken a lot of dogs lately down to the shelter. But their owners are always found. I mean, don't get me wrong, the owners are found usually the next day. But there's, they're just not, you know, they're not registered. There's no tags. There's no collar. There's nothing. So they pay the fee essentially to cover the animal control officers, so the taxpayers aren't paying it. So he's picking up the animal, making the attempt to find it, driving it to kennel bunk, coming back.
It sounds like it could be costing more than $50. Yeah, why don't we see what surrounding towns are doing? And, but if, if the animal was tagged, we wouldn't have to go through that process of...
We wouldn't take him to kennel bunk at all. We would just call the number on the tag.
Can we just remind people how much it costs to register your dog?
$6.
$6, people.
Even if you don't register the dog, even if you don't, well, even if you don't register the dog, just buy the little tag at Walmart that's got, you know, Zoe's name on it. Anything. I mean, then at that point, we would give you a warning to renew, you know, to register the dog. But at least we would have your contact information.
Okay. We have the public comment section now?
Just two questions.
Hi, my name's Lois Missu. I have, who's actually gonna be taking Lowery's place at the Rec. Anybody at this point, or is it opening?
I think we have somebody lined up, don't we?
Well, we have two members on the Rec. Committee right now with probably about three openings. There's still three openings. So whether the two current members decide to take a Rec. Director or Chairman position, that's, that's up to the committee. I mean, the board only appoints Rec. Members.
Right. And I didn't know if you guys already had somebody in that plan.
We, no, we haven't, even with his resignation, we already had three openings.
Okay. And the other question is, I'm back out front again. The five foot on that, on that rail, is it before or after the rails?
What?
The opening that we're doing, the new one, with the, with the oncoming, is it before or after the rails? Is it still gonna remain that five foot?
So, I'm not gonna quote the numbers of the code enforcement, but after, after last week's meeting, we met out there the next day, and he pulled out the commercial book for handicap, and he assured me that it's gonna meet standard once the railing's wrong. We extended, he extended a piece out. Did you notice that Mr. Drummy came back?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Winchell still needs to come and bring the pavement up.
Right.
But the railing's gonna be pushed back. Ken's measured it twice and says it will meet requirements.
Now, Will, my other question is, is it gonna go off where the tar meets the top or out right from the beginning?
Where it ends, the tar's gonna be, the pavement's gonna be brought up to it.
Okay.
And it's gonna be smoothed in, just like elaborate.
It's more towards the church part.
Correct. It's not going down. There's gonna be a railing there.
Okay. My only concern is, and I'll concern it again, is that turn when either a high chair or a pair of crutches, because I've done both. It's gonna be that turn coming in the door. I thought maybe you were talking straight on, because it's a lot nearer than what's at the library. Libraries have, it has a perfect turn. It's wide enough. It's got the footage. This one I'm more concerned about.
It'll be easier if we can look at it together out there, because I can, I may not be explaining well what, what they're intending on doing. But, I mean, between the gentleman that built the ramp, the road commissioner, and the code enforcement officer, I assure you, it's gonna meet ADA requirements.
Oh, I have no, no qualms. I'm just double checking, because once it's in, it's in.
I agree. And the railing, gentlemen.
And it's money that, you know, it would kind of suck in the long run and have to redo again just because of one inch to ten.
That's why the railings aren't up yet, because we are double, triple checking, so.
All right. Well, thanks again, John.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'm gonna move on to announcements. There, we have flu shots on September 22nd from 10 to 11, right here.
Right here.
Girl Scout informational meeting in September?
She actually just brought that in. She didn't have time to stay, because she was gonna be at the open house. But she asked that you would go over that information, if you don't mind?
September 27th at 6:00 PM at the school. Is that a Thursday night?
Wednesday? Wednesday.
Wednesday. September 27th is a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Come discover Girl Scouts and enjoy girl-led activity. Learn about volunteer opportunities. Register as a member. If you choose to, receive this free patch for attending. And there's a patch for attending. So again, September 27th, 6 to 7, at the Acton Elementary School. The Apple Fest and 5K is September 30th, beginning at 9:00 AM. That runs until 3:00 PM on Saturday. It is also held on Sunday, October 1st, from 9 to 3. There'll be lots of vendors there. The zoning board appeals. The Rec. Committee and the cemetery committee still have openings, if you want to come volunteer your time.
I know I'm not supposed to interrupt, but what age is on the flu shot? Is that for 16 above or anybody?
They have to contact visiting nurse. They just rent the hall.
All right.
So tonight, we have another informational meeting on marijuana at 6:00 PM. And the forest conservation committee meeting is also tonight at 7:00 PM. The Rec. Committee and the planning board are meeting on September 21st, both at, at 7:00 PM. Warrant and Finance Committee meets September 25th at 6:00 PM. And the Board of Selectmen's on here. We meet at the 26th at 5:00 PM.
I figured if I was putting all meetings, I might as well put yours on there. Unless we're having the week off.
I'm taking, no.
Okay, just checking.
I will.
And then I'm removing G, right?
Yeah. There's no auditor meeting, so just scratch that on your notes. Road Committee meets September 27th at 6:00 PM, and the cemetery committee is meeting September 28th at 5:00 PM. The, oh, just one more thing. The, the library is beginning their story and activity hour this Friday at, from 10 to 11 for infant to preschool-aged kids. And Nancy Perry from First Families First Literacy Center is coming to kick that off. It'll be fun. Do we have anything else?
Just one quick thing. If we decide to do a ballot in November, you were gonna check to see if we had the 45 days accounted?
Yeah, like 15 minutes ago, you asked me that.
I think I just counted. We do.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and, and don't, I mean, again, I want to pull the, and we've got time before the meeting, so I can have it for you before the public...
Okay. That's all.
My recollection is to call a special town, to call it a town meeting by secret ballot, it's a minimum of 45 days. I mean, absentee ballots have to be available 30. That's why I believe it's 45. But I'll grab the book when we break for these 20 minutes and double check. We, do we, or do we not have the 45?
Is it, can you count weekends?
Yes.
Okay.
But, I mean, you're gonna have to sign an order, sign an order calling for a secret ballot.
Right.
Election, and the question's gotta be on there. It doesn't mean it has to be complete, but you can't change a question after that. So you could hold a special meeting to sign the order and then spend that time working on it.
Yep. I just, I just wanted that info for tonight. It may come up.
Well, if you adjourn, I'll go and get it.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?